I call the order of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for Community Unit District 186. Nancy, will you call the roll please?
Mr. Beavers.
Here.
Mrs. Dorff.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mrs. James.
Here.
Mrs. Mallor.
Here.
Mr. Ronge.
Here. Before we move to the next item, we need to seat a new board member. Last night, the Board interviewed seven different people who expressed an interest in the open seat. We, as a board, were extremely pleased with that amount of interest in the seat. We told every one of them that we hope they will stay interested because there are four open seats coming up for election next April. So, I hope they all do. It was pretty exciting. So, after interviewing, we selected Mr. Kevin Bain to be our next board member and occupy the empty seat that was left. So, Mr. Bain, if you will come forward, we will administer the oath to you. You can just stand out. All right, if you would repeat after me. I, Kevin Bain, do solemnly affirm...
I, Kevin Bain, do solemnly affirm...
That I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education...
Duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education.
Of Murphysboro Community Unit School District.
Of Murphysboro Community Unit District.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States...
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
I further affirm that...
I further affirm that.
I shall respect taxpayer interest...
I shall respect taxpayer interest.
By serving as a faithful protector...
Serving as a faithful protector.
Of the school district's assets.
Of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect...
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion...
The free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members...
By my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the Board...
And others who seek a hearing before the Board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member...
I shall recognize that a board member...
Has no legal authority as an individual...
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote...
And decisions can only be made by the majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And finally, I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board...
I shall abide by the majority decisions of the Board.
While retaining the right to seek changes...
While retaining the right to seek changes.
In such decisions through ethical...
In such decisions that are ethical.
And constructive channels.
And constructive channels.
Welcome to the Board. (laughter) All right, next item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Bain, your first order of...
(inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item we need to approve the agenda. Mrs. Bush, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
We do have one change under Schedule of Bills included in your board packets for in-between Schedule Bills from June 21st through June 28th and in-between for the year end bill stated June 29th.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right, then I will accept a motion to approve the amended agenda. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We need an approval of the consent agenda which includes: District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated July the 17th, 2018; District 186 Special Board Meeting Minutes dated July the 26th, 2018; District 186 Special Board Meeting Minutes dated August the 1st, 2018; District 186 Special Board Meeting Minutes dated August the 20th, 2018; Tri-County Budget Hearing Minutes dated July the 11th, 2018; Tri-County Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated July the 11th of 2018; Tri-County Bills for August 2018; Tri-County Fiscal Year 19 Budget Applications and Reports. I will accept a motion to approve that consent agenda. In a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of District 186 Bills for August 2018. Is there any questions from the Board? If you have a question, please let us, the rest of the Board, know the page that you are on. I have a question. Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
This is on page six. Cam services, middle school, removal of asbestos. I'm assuming that that's in relationship to the elevator?
It is.
Okay.
It is. When we removed some of the carpet, I believe it was in the office area, there was tile containing asbestos underneath that that we weren't aware of initially.
Okay. And my other question was on page 10. It says, "The Office of Sponsored Project." Is that a pass-through?
That's SIU.
So, it's a pass-through?
That's just what they... Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Early childhood money that we receive and pay out to SIU.
In that same stack, the second page one, there was 28,000, absolutely plumbing, and there was a bunch of miscellaneous things. Was that a bid job, or is that piecing together different jobs?
There are basically all the plumbing jobs for the summer that we needed done absolutely did for us. John Keller had done a lot of those in the past.
Did we bid out all those different jobs?
No, no. Because they were all small jobs. So, that was the total. And really, it wouldn't have amounted to a lot if it hadn't been for the middle school drain in the kitchen. That was a huge job where they had to dig by hand, waist-high, way out. It was a... Actually, when I got that bill, I was saying, "Oh, that's not bad at all," because I expected it to be horrendous. We had a drain that a pipe they caved in in that kitchen.
So, it was backing up?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we babied it as long as we could to get into the summer. So, we've been having issues with that drain for quite some time. And it was one of those that we knew it was getting the concrete was going to have to get busted out, and we were going to have to do an extensive job.
Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve the bills as presented. Second? Nancy?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Mallor?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorff?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Ronge?
Yes. Motion carries. Communications?
Yes, I have a few.
Okay.
Starting with a verbal resignation. This is from Demetria Johnson. She was hired as a para aide, and before school started, she told us she found another position. So, we would like action on her verbal resignation.
I'm assuming Administration is going to...
Oh, yes, sorry. I was taking notes again. Recommend acceptance.
Okay. I'll accept a motion. Some of two approve that in a second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Carries?
Okay, I have another verbal resignation, same type. Her name is Elizabeth Robinson. She was hired also as a para. She found another position and left prior to school starting. Administration recommends acceptance of her verbal resignation.
All right, you've heard the recommendation from Administration accepting this resignation. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm looking through my notes, through all the employments and moods and things. We failed to actually accept a resignation from Courtney Odell. She did not submit a letter. She submitted information to Carla Ayers. So, I think that's how we kind of...
She's still employed.
Missed it. But she... Everybody knew that she had taken a position elsewhere. So, we could act on that.
Recommend acceptance. Our ordinance.
And I will entertain a motion to accept that. Second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and this is a short email to Mr. Brody, Jan Bush, Jeff Keener, Lynn Navara. It is, "With deep sorrow that I will no longer be able to coach middle school girls volleyball after 20 years of service and dedication to the program and District 186. Thank you for the past 20 years. Mike Lane."
Administration recommends acceptance.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
Some.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Is that it?
No, couple more. It is, "With great condolences that I inform you I will not be able to coach at the middle school this upcoming year. This has been a difficult decision for me to decide, but with coaching up to four teams this past year, it was just too overwhelming. I've been given the opportunity to provide volleyball lessons to the girls in the region. If I were to coach middle school this year, I would not be able to put the amount of effort into this opportunity that I would like to focus on. Along the side of that, my main job juggling my responsibilities as assistant coach at Johnny Logan are continuously growing. I want to thank you for letting me be able to coach at Murphysboro Middle School. With me being an alumni, it was a great... It was great to give back to the kids. I got a great experience out of coaching there for three years. I learned a lot with coaching with the younger age. I'm glad I got to give back and share stories of my time playing as a Murphysboro Blue Devil. Again, I want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you. Jessica Whitehead."
Administration recommends acceptance of Jessica's resignation.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation from Administration. Second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Murphysboro School Board Members, last summer, I was granted approval by the Board to continue my graduate studies at SIUC to obtain an English as second language teaching endorsement. I have completed this coursework and would like to request the 16 credit hours be applied to my salary schedule. Sincerely, Katie Russell.
And she... Katie had already requested permission to take those classes, and the Board approved those. So, because she did requests previously, the Administration recommends acceptance to add those classes to her experience on the salary schedule.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. Second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mr. Brody, I am requesting time off this fall for maternity leave. I am due October 10th, and I would like to take off approximately nine to 10 weeks following that date. That would put me back a week or two before finals around December 14. I will have all my plans ready for my long-term sub. I plan to use sick days. Thank you for taking the time to read this and let me know if you have any questions or concerns. Sincerely, Rachel Chamnus.
Administration recommends approval.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
Some.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
And one final, this is really... No actions required for this. The Board each year recognizes tenure status for teachers, and with the new evaluation system, teachers can receive this rating earlier than their four years. And in this case, Rachel Chamnus has completed two consecutive years of distinguished rating, which allows for her to receive this tenure status. So, this is really just a recognition publicly that she has achieved this, and I will be sending her a letter indicating this.
Very good. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, next item is fishbowl. Do we have... If we have one?
Yes. From the High School Art Department, "A big thank you to the Elizabeth A. Smizer Charitable Trust for its recent donation of $25,000 for a new kiln for the high school art room. This will make a huge difference for the art students. The old one had become dangerously antiquated and cost-consuming to repair. In addition, $10,000 is donated to the Jackson CEO that created Entrepreneurial Opportunities Class. This is a class for high school students where the goal is to give students access to real business leaders as they develop individual business plans. It is completely self-funded by donations from businesses and individuals. Smizer being one of those which continues to support its efforts. The trust has been gracious in its support of our community and students for several years, though the years it... Through the years, it has provided assistance with the initiation and continuance of soccer needs and facilities. Purchase of Skylab, which costs $17,400, and Crimson Express Band Tour, $6,000. It is through generous donations such as these that enable the district to provide better opportunities for our students and their futures. It is very much appreciated."
Good. Any others? I kind of expected one. I understand Georgia Marshall was recognized as an unsung hero.
She's been hiding.
Are you hiding?
Yeah, well, I'm sitting. I'm not hiding.
Georgia, congratulations. That was quite an honor, and we appreciate what you do for the district. You well-deserve it. Yep. Okay, item number 10 is Freedom of Information Act request.
We have none.
Okay. Next item is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Do we have any public concerns? Do we have any employee concerns? Very good. We thank you all for coming. Moving to old business. First item is the District Financial Update. Mrs. Bush?
I really only have one item for update at this point, and we actually did receive our evidence-based funding budget amount for fiscal '18-'19, and that amount has increased by $621,397. So, all the money that we received last year plus that amount, so our new funding amount for evidence-based funding, taking place of the general state aid plus special ed and some other dollars, $11,025,84 will be our new amount.
Say that again, please.
$11,025,584.
Thank you.
What'd you say the increase was? $621,397. And the hopes is that that money starts coming this month. We've actually received the first payment of that, the middle of August, that we will receive all of that money by the end of the fiscal year and not have it prorated this year. Since they've started at the beginning, you know, I'm always skeptical about that. So, hopefully, that money will all come to us as promised.
I think everybody's still holding their breath.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Still waiting for what else changes and what else goes away.
Right. And where the money's going to, in the end, come from for all of that.
Is that it?
That's all I have for now.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is a project update, which is enclosure number one of your packet.
This is one piece of our project update. Our... This is in your packet, a change order requested for the auditorium and the Center for Performing Arts at the high school, that job. And there, it has to do with the concrete on the front of the building. And Mr. Seifert's here, and I would actually like him, because he speaks architect and I don't, to kind of explain... Kind of explain why this change order is in our best interest.
I'm gonna give you kind of a timeline on how this all came about. The existing plans that we were designing from had elevation on the floor. We did our topo on the outside. All the elevations exterior checked. We designed the building to match the existing floor. We came out, laid it out for the contractor. The floor is actually eight inches higher than what it showed on the drawings, on the existing drawings.
So, it was a surveyor?
It had to be... Something had to have happened back in 1977.
Oh, you're saying that's what the original plans showed?
Original plans showed that. Only thing we can think of is they raised the original building and didn't put it on the plans. So, we knew this would possibly come about, but we wanted to get everything built, kind of see where we had to get everything. And what this is, is to take care of the parking area out in front of the... Basically, the bus drop-off. There was issues with the bus drop-off to begin with. Held water all the time. Every time it rained, it held water. So, this would correct that, plus give you a 40-year, 50-year service to do that. And it makes everything ADA compliant. If the building had been at the original elevation, we wouldn't be talking about this because it was... We could have made the grades work, but we just can't make the grades work the way it is.
And to get proper drainage.
And get proper drainage.
Any other questions from the Board?
Is there like a threshold or something that this has to go out for bids, or this is...
I think you're a threshold that they can approve anything over 25.
Well, the Board has to approve anything over 25,000.
Right, the Board has to.
But the change order... The threshold for a change order before you have to bid is 10% of the project. So, we are nowhere near... We're nowhere near that. So, it's just... It's basically just for approval in this case for that change order. And this change order is 35,51.
So, how far... How much asphalt will be new?
It's 25 feet wide by 100 and...
2,400 square feet by seven inches. Is that the...
That's a concrete...
Yeah, it's about 145, 150 feet. So, basically, from where they tore out next to the gymnasium, all the way around to the seating area, this circular monument seating area, that'll all be new. And that's where the buses can drop off. You'll have ADA access to both the auditorium and the office straight off the... So...
Who is the concrete subcontractor?
Barry Concrete.
And this... You're looking to win at the very end of everything at now?
Well, they'll do it as soon as you say yes or no.
And how does this flow with everything else? I mean, school's in session and...
It won't affect that because...
You're gonna be able to get it done?
Yeah, the students aren't using that area.
We've got an entire area barricaded off right now so that it's flowing just as it did in the spring. The kids were used to parking where they were, so we just said, "Don't change it until it's done." Once December's here and it's all done, semester two, we'll come back to where we used to be.
And they're still using the north doors by the van to go in and out?
By the gymnasium. Honestly, to be honest with you, it would be nice if we could start getting in the south gym doors as soon as possible because we just spent a lot of money to have the basketball court refinished. And now, every morning, you have 600 kids trafficking across the court to get into the school. So, it'd be nice... What I had last year was a barricade where we could... They came in those south gym doors by the old entrance, and it was... Had orange-take barricade where they stayed off the court and away from the PE classes. Again, our PE teachers, any parents, anybody that's coming in is going through their classroom right now.
Do we have an idea, Jim, when that will be available?
Well, potentially, in the next 30 days. If they get this all done and get the sidewalk done. There's some exterior stuff that has to be done that'll be overhead. But that's the pan... Those Trespa panels, we've got colored panels that go on the face. They're supposed to be here in two weeks. So, those will go up fairly quickly.
So, hopefully, the latest, the end of September?
Potentially, yeah. So, we could get him in that way. That's the goal.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board?
I'll give an update on the progress.
Yeah, that'd be great, an update on the... Love that, because I don't have to.
High school, everything... Let's take action on this first. All right.
Let's do that.
Yes, I'm assuming the recommendation...
Administration recommends acceptance... Approval of the change order on the high school auditorium.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation for the change order from Administration. I'll second. Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorff?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Mallor?
Yes.
Mr. Ronge?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, now, okay. Give us an update.
Everything seems to be on schedule. We've talked with Fay and McGee several times. They're still planning on being done at the end of December so everybody can move in and everything. There's a few things that gotta happen. Weather's gotta cooperate on the exterior stuff to get the seating and grass and all that in. So, that's looking good. They're getting... Guys were there yesterday preparing the auditorium for the ceiling. And the seats... I think the seats are scheduled sometime in November to be here. So, that's kind of the progression. The glass wall, the exterior glass wall that went storefront...
For the entrance?
For the entrance.
Gotcha.
That, I think, is 30 days away. So, next 30 days, a lot of things are gonna change out there.
The plumbing got taken care of so it's not raining inside.
Plumbing is taken care of. It's not raining inside anymore. Shooting water into the hallway. But, yeah.
Everything was concrete, so it wasn't an issue.
Yeah.
But still.
Yeah. Middle school job, Mr. Keener's moved in. Everything seems to be working fine. So, that job's done.
I'm gonna ask something. I'm hearing that the elevator needs to be reset just about every day? But they're aware of it?
No, they came. A guy spent about one full day working on it. There was something to do with the motherboard or something.
It was a programming issue, so not an elevator malfunction.
Yeah.
But the bugs seem to be worked out now?
Yeah, it's... The last three days, it's worked fine.
Good.
And it all looks nice. I mean, it all...
Looks really good. Switchgear job's done. Basically, I mean, they're doing punch lift stuff. You guys are on full power now.
Good.
They're waiting on a couple of doors to come in. That should be to finish that job up, so...
So, keep our fingers crossed, still.
We did some health life safety surveys for Crowthers and McQuavon. We will have those to Mr. Brody probably the end of this week for him to review. We'll make changes, and probably for you guys to take action on September.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seifert.
The only other things I have on, not necessarily project updates, that Mr. Brody and I talked a little bit about at the September meeting, bringing to the Board some issues on custodial and maintenance, grounds, needs, staffing issues, you know, looking into some different things for the district and, you know, all... Everything that we're doing and the staffing that we have and bringing a plan or at least all, everything that we're doing and the staffing that we have and bringing a plan or at least a discussion with the board at the September meeting. Also, would like to start talking about plans for next summer because it will be here upon us pretty soon. And we have several things that probably need to be attended to next summer. The first being asbestos abatement at the middle school to move forward with an HVAC replacement that we probably should have done, was it two or three years ago? What kind of funding issues through us off?
Four now, four, forty-four years.
Yeah, we replaced the boilers one summer and phase two was supposed to be the HVAC replacement for the rest of the building. And because of funding, preparation, and general state aid, that didn't happen as planned. So it'll be a two summer, assuming board approval of that project moving forward. It would be a two summer project, abatement would have to happen. And then next summer would be replacement. So discussion of that, discussion of issues with high school track, General Johnny Logan, classroom space, some of those things.
Will the pros still be a health life safety fund or is it gonna be building?
For which...
The two-year project for HVAC?
It would have to be.
Or middle school, sorry.
Well, I would, I would assume that it would probably be big enough that we would need to look at our options and see what, what the funding could be. By the end of this year, looking to have a balance of, of our sales tax, our kind of facility sales tax of about two and a half million, I think. So that fund, we're, we're slowly building that up. By the end of this budget year, we'll have, that's still not enough to, to build a lot or do a complete HVAC. But that's, that will be part of that conversation. But Mr. Grove, just want you to be aware that we, that we start talking about that next month and what, what our needs are and where we need to go from here. So, kind of a heads up on that.
Okay, that it?
Yes.
Alright, moving to item number three is the registration, the start of school information.
And we have a handout of class sizes this morning, elementary class sizes, where we are across the board as of this morning. So this afternoon, that could have changed. I don't know if we had new registrations. Taking a look at where we are, K through five, and with the addition of fifth grade. And I've already forgotten what grade level we added. Fourth grade, third grade? I think it was fourth, fourth grade, okay. So numbers are getting a lot better than what they did last year across the board. Seventeen, eighteen kindergarten, first grade, twenty, twenty-one, second. Seventeen to nineteen, the third, with the highest of our numbers being at the fourth grade level, twenty-two, twenty-three. And we're in our second week of school and so far, things to be, seem to be moving pretty well. I'm sure there are little bumps along the way, but we are in full swing.
Okay, any questions from the board? Class sizes look good. Look really, really good. Okay. Item four is the K two science curriculum.
Yes, at the April meeting, the district presented the curriculum for third grade through twelfth grade, and that was approved by the board. We now have the request for the kindergarten through second grade science curriculum. And I have kind of a long, long agenda item that I wrote to, to talk about those kinds of things. Read a lot of books, leveled readers, mystery science, so a lot of things to go along with that, mystery science. Cost of that approximately forty-one thousand, which won't include the consumables that will need to be purchased. Maybe not every year, everything, but there's quite a list of Dixie cups and cotton balls and just various things that go along with those mystery science experiments. So those will be purchased and, and refilled as needed. And also looking to purchase two storage cabinets, one for first and one for second, and storage containers to hold all of the curriculum. So I believe that's, that's the, that's the gist of it. But I can answer any questions, hopefully, or if not, I'm sure Carla could help. But the administration's recommendation is to approve the K two curriculum as presented.
What, what kind of term time are we looking at to get this stuff in?
Some of it's already, I already approved some of the, did purchase orders for some of the leveled readers because they, Amazon, so, but I made sure it was under, nothing over twenty-five thousand to get them moving because I know, I knew you would want them moving. So we still have, I've got the purchase orders in the hopper, ready to push out for the next generation science standards and weekly readers, maybe one other little thing. So that's where, that's where most of the cost lie for first grade, the next generation science standards. So once we...
What's the timeframe?
Once we get that done, purchase order, purchase order's out tomorrow. I don't know how, but some of the books are already here. Carla, we're written, plugged and guarded.
I already had them stamped and they're already in the classroom.
Okay.
So not all of them, but the ones we've gotten.
So the, so the leveled readers are getting pushed, have been pushed out already. So, like I said, one of the, one of the purchase orders I have in my hopper, the other one had a change on the Scholastic Weekly Reader, so that'll get pushed out tomorrow and as soon as they can get in. But I'd say, I'd say the turnaround on the, the next generation science standards will be pretty quick as well.
So, was the time difference between us, I think, April to August on deciding, is it a decision to now or?
What's that, basically, when did they decide on this?
Yeah, I guess when everything else was decided in April, now we're voting on this in August. I just don't wanna have kids behind.
Right, no, I mean...
No, I mean, not that we can fix this, I'm saying moving forward.
Yeah.
Was the reason for this then?
Picked out, I know the mystery science and some of the books, so yeah, they were picked out, so.
They were either picked out then last year, okay.
So they just didn't get ordered or? End of May, so it was the, the gap between teachers leaving at the same time that we received the information and, and getting the orders out, so. And who was going to do those, which turned out to be me. So it's, they're done. But hopefully that process will be streamlined when we do reading?
Reading.
Reading adoption this year. And we'll happen a little quicker and we can get everything approved at the same time. So that's, that's definitely the goal. Mystery science, I think we had that basically day one, day two of school, teachers had access to that, so.
So they have had something to use or?
Yeah, I mean, the online mystery science was, was there. I think we purchased that by Tuesday, Wednesday of last week, the latest.
Any other questions from the board?
Does it need any training or do they need any training or anything with this or they all?
We piloted it last year, the mystery science, and then last May, I got subs and had my science and many fine level readers to go along with each lesson. So that's, yeah, no, they're...
So they're ready to go as soon as it gets in?
Yep, and they actually, last year, most of the teacher, well, all of them, tried the, the mystery science. We had like a three-month free pilot, you know, trying to get us the bios, we did. So, yeah, so they're good with it.
Any other questions? Alright, hearing done, I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation from administration on the K two science curriculum. Second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Runde?
Yes, motion carries. Item five is the Murphysboro Middle School Elevator Project Permit.
Yes, and this is, this is a paperwork formality that needs to be approved by the board so that we can get the occupancy permit for the elevator project and move forward. The regional office has to have that paperwork in order to issue that permit. So the recommendation of the administration would be that the board approve the permit as presented.
Alright, I've heard the recommendation from administration, I will entertain, entertain a motion to accept that.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item six and last item under all business is the permission to bid for driver's ed van and two activity buses.
So this is a revisit from last month where we talked about the need for these two vehicles. So at this point, the administration would ask that the board give us approval to put the bids out to purchase two new activity buses, but with an alternate request to submit a proposal to lease the activity buses for a three to five-year period. So we would ask for what's your, what's the cost for the new buses? What's the, and then we can kind of look at those and decide what's best, the best scenario for us with the, all the same specifications. I have been able to put my hands on a pretty nice bid spec on the white activity buses that I borrowed from another district. So that is something that I have ready to push things out and get those because we're down to one and I know it's going out pretty frequently, so have the need to.
Who's mainly using those activity vans?
Athletics.
So I, alright, then who's driving those?
Our coaches, teachers.
Uh, there's coaches, sponsors.
So they've got their license to drive them, obviously.
They're, they're, they're not, they're...
You don't have to have...
It's a fourteen passenger, huh? So it's right below that requirement.
You do not have to have a special license for it.
They're, they're used a lot. I mean, in the middle of a cross-country season or a baseball season, they're out five days a week, maybe six or seven if there's weekend tournaments and games.
Cheerleaders take them, basketball team takes them in the winter time, wrestlers, I mean, they go, they go, go, go.
What did we discuss last, uh, last week, last month? Yeah, didn't we, didn't we put this exact proof?
It is the same thing.
We talked about approval for to look into, so.
We did, we did, and the, we were going to look at leasing versus purchasing, but we're just gonna roll it into one bid request because frankly, we have not had time to get back to, I got the, I got the bid re, bid specs, but instead of getting proposals for leases, I had, we haven't had an opportunity to do that, so rolling that into one because it's the same bus companies that do the leasing on the buses.
So really, we're just kind of tweaking what we talked about last month?
We are, we are, and the same, and then the, to go also out for bid for a, for a driver's ed.
Same thing.
Driver's ed vehicle, yes, it is, total real estate.
Yeah, okay, I thought we...
Really no information, just board approval, because we didn't really get board approval last time. Board approval to do the bids, bring them back in September with the, the best, the best cost, the best proposal for the driver's ed van as well. That is, that has a big need, big need also. I'm getting a little nervous about sending that out on a regular basis.
Any other questions? It looked like you had one, Mrs. Miller.
No, she just wonders why we're looking at it.
Yeah, I feel like we're talking about something.
I have, we gotta be, right, no, you're, no.
Just trying to get it right on my mind, that's all.
We just didn't get any approval last time, so.
Alright, then we need to entertain a motion to accept, given permission to administration to bid driver's ed van and two activity buses. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. New business, first item is the board approval for security camera solution request or proposal.
Our camera systems in our buildings are getting to be outdated and the images that we're seeing are not the best quality of images and administration uses those cameras on a regular basis. I'm gonna put Mr. Ellemeyer on the spot because you had some really good points on what we're, what we're doing with those cameras and why they're so crucial and important. And so I'm gonna let you briefly tell the board why.
I mean, I would say, I, I used it for probably forty-five minutes today, following the student to see what they did when they went to their locker.
Six, two.
It, it goes from anything as minor as a student lost their cell phone, so I'm looking into if it was stolen or just misplaced or forgotten somewhere, to something as major as two years ago, somebody came with me with news from KFBS twelve of Motomart getting robbed, and we both sat there and said, well, that looks like so-and-so. And so then I watched the camera and watched that student come in that next morning with those clothes on. I watched where that student went, I went to that locker, I found four hundred dollars from Motomart and the cigarrillos from Motomart, and we were able to call the police and say, we know who robbed Motomart because we have all of the goods from Motomart. I mean, it goes from, I mean, it's, it's a lifeline for us. Honestly, to be honest, it's a huge deterrent because every kid in the school knows that in every hallway, outside, around the school, in the cafeteria and the gymnasium, they're being watched. And so if they violate a policy, they know there, there's a good chance they're gonna get caught when they're in public airspace. It's expensive. I've been doing the RFP for the district for all four buildings, for the high school, the middle school, Carruthers, and the general. And I think it's gonna be a lot of money, but I, it's huge for safety.
I think we're estimating somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I've, I've talked to, yeah, I've talked to...
I expected worse, actually.
How much did you say, Jane?
I expected worse.
You expected worse?
A hundred and twenty-five?
I, I talked to Dan from So Illinois Securities. He is the guy that comes out for repairs, which I have to call him now five to ten times a year because we have cameras going out, they're fuzzy. What's happening is the, they're not able to get the parts anymore for these older systems that we have.
How old is that system, do you have any idea, just in your building?
I don't know for sure, but I bet it's fifteen, twenty years old from what Dan says. It's almost ancient. I mean, that's, that's what Dan says, it's ancient and he can't find the parts to replace. And so, I mean, the, the other part of that, the, as we go in, and he, and he said that we've got multiple options we can do here. We can bid out for all of them to get replaced now. We can also bid out for other options for them to propose, hey, over the next five years, we're gonna work out things as they go bad and, and add more up-to-date. Two-point-oh megapixel cameras are pretty much all that they install now are the lowest quality that they'll then install. And, and then our servers almost can't handle that high quality of a picture either. So it's about storage as well. Right now, I can go back two to three weeks on storage and, and watch cameras two to three weeks behind. We can go back, and he said that's really a cheap expense in the whole room of things where we could go thirty days, sixty days, just, it's a bigger hard drive to hold it for longer.
Since Steve is always listening to our meetings, I just looked at my phone to see if I got an answer from him. Steve said that the cam, some of the cameras are fifteen-plus years old and recorders are six-plus years old. So the, the storage space are over six. And I was just thinking that the general is seventeen, seventeen years now? So, and those, a lot of those cameras are original.
I have like several that are out, probably at least sixty.
Steve, yeah, Steve keeps the recorder going, so he's, uh-oh, he says it's not recording. It is.
What about, you know, I realize that the parking lot is, you know, and if, if, you can't put cameras out in the middle of a parking lot, are there cameras put on the building?
The cameras are on the building at this time showing over the parking lot, I mean, we're...
Yeah, but they don't reach out that far and...
They reach out far enough to where we can see the, I mean, we've, we've been able to do speeding, reckless driving on the parking lot and figure out who they are. I mean, they're noticeable, they're, they're very useful on it. I mean, the cops, the police have used them for tickets before because, and I mean, we've suspended parking privileges, those types of things in the past. Today, I caught a kid leaving during lunch, using the camera after lunch of them going and then coming back.
Yes, I just remember some circumstance and maybe it was just the quality. I was thinking it was a combo of distance and quality.
If any of you would wanna come out and see the quality of the older cameras compared to the quality of the higher cameras. We have a few of the higher quality cameras at the new entrance for the gym where we had to spend the money to get that gym door latch put on and camera system put there so that the secretaries can let people in. And it's very high quality there, I mean.
So big difference in that?
Huge. It's almost like Nintendo compared to PS five.
Alright, so we've had this gentleman come out, you said, five or six times a year?
For my building at least.
That's, yeah.
Oh, it's just it, what, in a year's time, what do we spend with him?
I, honestly, I don't know what, what we spend on repairs, but, you know, we've added, replaced a camera here and a camera there, so, and some of them just don't get replaced. I mean, there are probably several cameras that aren't working.
Yeah, I've got probably five to eight cameras now.
Where does that funding come from? Is that life safety, is that?
Uh, no, not really, life safety.
Sales tax from?
We have the facility sales tax that, that we can use for that. It's, it's probably too big of a job to use, to use O and M funds. I mean, we could, but then it would just be, you know, regular O and M expenses. We would have to go to the kind of facility sales tax for. So that would be something that we could, that we could do.
I haven't heard from Mr. Keener or, or Mr. Todd about your situation. You're both in the same...
Same, exact thing. We need, replacing the whole system is what we need. I was telling Ms. Taylor that we have two right now that, that are set, but yet the picture comes back as if they're moving backwards all the time. It's very hard to see anything on that. Some are very fuzzy, I would say. It's almost looking like a twilight a lot of the time. But they just, we use them all the time. Dan and Susan use them all the time. I looked on them today for something, I can't even remember why, but it's been some time. And I know it's not our responsibility, but the police can, have come to us probably four times last year. Hey, we had this happen, can you see if you can see? And, you know, it just kind of helps out the area a little bit.
There's a lot of safety involved with that too, with your students and staff.
Even like at the basketball game, if we have a fight at a basketball game and it's not even any students, it's adults, the police are able to use that footage to investigate what happened at the basketball game. You know, and there's just endless amounts of...
Last Friday, last Friday, we had a white vehicle parked out back behind by the trash cans, and one of the teachers mentioned that to me, but that camera for whatever reason is not recording. And so I wasn't able to go back. It was just an unidentified van and a car with earbuds. By the time the teacher made it to me to tell me about it, it was an hour later. He'd sat there somewhere between fifteen to about nine, and we don't want anybody hanging out in the lane back there. But I wasn't able to look up and see.
You know, to, to piggyback off of that, last year, Carruthers had a dumpster set on fire and trash thrown all over the, back behind the school. And it took us fifteen minutes for when they sent us the footage, well, this student, this student, this student. And so, I mean, we're able, it's, it's...
We had a dumpster completely packed the other Saturday night. I live down past there and it was empty after Friday. I drove by on Sunday morning and the thing was just getting full, it was a character incident. And so I got on the camera, where you can see the truck pull up there, but it, the system jumps. It went from backing up, seeing a person and, and it's twenty minutes later and it's all gone. So you, and it wasn't, wasn't enough to see who it was.
Is it motion, is it motion sensitive, those cameras?
Yeah, they are.
Steve's here, so did you have something you wanted to ask Steve?
The only other thing I would add is, is Mr. Ellemeyer was talking about the cameras and the quality. We also have several new cameras that are gonna be placed in the auditorium. It's not included in the spec. And so the idea of doing an RFP is to take care of all the recording issues we've got at all the schools, plus new cameras in the auditorium, plus replace all the old cameras all over the place. And this is the time to do it all at once instead of piece me with all.
Currently, as far as being able to monitor the cameras, is it all on one screen or you have to manually switch to different cameras to watch?
As of right now, the assistant principal and I at the high school have access. We can, I can, I can have a screen of thirty cameras at one time on my computer screen. I can go to four, I can go to one, I can go back and search four, search eight, however many I need to do. The police department also has access, which is a huge part of this. If we ever had an intruder situation, dispatchers can watch what's going on at our school and speak through radio to their police officers.
And that's encrypted?
Say, hey, this person is in D wing right now. I mean, this is...
So would any of that equipment still be useful or that equipment will now be, I mean, that's not twenty-year-old equipment?
Some of that is. The, some of the cameras... The, some of the cameras, probably the cameras that have been installed in the last three to five years, we may keep if they're high enough quality. We still have many fifteen-year-plus cameras that they need to go. It's time. All of our recorders are out of warranty, we can't get parts for them, they need to go. And then it's time for us to have a security solution where admins and Ds and students can use their phones to gain access to that, and we could push that out so that they can have remote access and all of it.
And and I believe the auditorium's already being wired for cameras.
It is, it is, but the cameras themselves are not included.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to spend some money on the cameras and I wanna do it all at once.
Years ago, we had a grant that paid for, helped pay for those, and I'm trying to remember what that grant was called. Steve, do you remember? I can't remember, I can't remember, we had, that we used it several years and that's one of the things that we did is pay for those cameras. But that was, that's been probably twelve, thirteen years ago. Anyway, we haven't had that kind of funding for that specific reason for a long time. So, working on an RFP, if the board approves that we could roll out for for those cameras, the administration would recommend that the board approve the district to be able to.
The RFP will be for each individual building, you said, right?
All altogether. And the RFP is probably forty pages. And I mean, it's got all of it going through it, and then it's got a page with the map of the middle school, the high school, general. It's also gonna set up a date where they do a walkthrough, they meet at the high school at nine AM, we walk them through, any companies through the high school, then they would go to the middle school, then to the general, then to Carruthers.
We'll be able to break down, if we say we can only spend X, we'll be able to break down and say, we have enough to do the high school, the middle school. It'll be, it won't be one big lump sum and it's either all or nothing.
The way the proposal has.
The RFP is written that way.
It's written that way, and it's also written so that if they wanted to do a transition into this over five years, what it would cost each year, that there's mult, the RFP, the way it states right now is there's multiple ways that a company, a vendor could propose their solution.
Is there any benefit to taking care of the ones that don't work? Obviously, getting us at a certain level, but then slowly, you know, phasing in and out so that as new technology comes out, what seems to be every year, you always have the best? I mean, obviously, we have to get to a level where things are working.
I know the admins are doing that now. They push out to Dan at Southern Illinois.
Yeah, Dan's already been out.
Repairs and keep some things running now.
I guess what I'm asking is, do we have some cameras that could still get by for a couple of years so that we could do the phase in and out and always keep up with new technology and just keep it rolling, or no? We need everything.
The recorders all need to go, and that's.
Right.
That's a huge part of that. The recorders are twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a piece and we need four of them. So immediately, there's a, there's half of everything.
So once you spend that, you might as well just get.
That's, that's my thought, also knowing that we've got twelve-plus cameras to go into the auditorium area. And so when you start buying quantity, you might as well.
Just might get it all.
And with a brand-new auditorium, we really have to have cameras there.
And just, so you guys know, as of right now, the RFP has to release the RFP September first, I think. For them, for us to do the walkthroughs mid-September, for them to get their bids in October fifteenth, I think is what the RFP said. October first. October first. And so, in other words, we're able to start evaluating the proposals by October first, and hopefully, we're able to pick a vendor and say, hey, let's start rolling in December when the auditorium's done and then we get this, hopefully, we're fully functioned with new crisis plans at the high school, everything with the auditorium starting in May at the end of this school year. The next school year, we will start fresh.
And you said this includes the increased storage, right?
He said, he, the way he worded it to me, and this is just one vendor, obviously, there's gonna be a few that are interested, I would say. He said that that's a very minimal cost compared to the whole situation. I mean, he just pretty much said it's the difference in a hard drive that's, instead of three hundred dollars is eight hundred dollars. So you're talking five hundred dollars to go from two weeks of storage to sixty days of storage.
So it does include it then?
Any other questions from the board? Alright, you've heard the recommendation then to request proposals for the security cameras, I'll entertain a motion for that. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is to approve the salary and compensation report, which is enclosure number two of your packet.
And these numbers are, where it talks about the eighteen-nineteen prediction for current administrators, those are the same, obviously, as seventeen-eighteen because salaries have not been brought to the board for approval. And it will probably be sometime before that is. So new positions are listed here, but existing positions and salaries are the same. And this is just a requirement of Public Act ninety-six, ninety-four thirty-four, that that this report be approved by the board and posted prior, on the website prior to October first. So administration, administration's recommendation is that the board approve the salary report as presented.
Questions from the board? Not, I won't entertain a motion. Good for you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is District one-eighty-six tentative fiscal year nineteen budget, and we need to set the hearing date and time for that.
So this is the tentative, there may be some changes prior to adoption, and will be reviewed at the budget hearing, which, assuming the board is fine with that, six fifteen on September twenty-fifth would be the recommended time. And then the regular board meeting started at six-thirty on the twenty-fifth.
Questions? And I'll entertain a motion to set the hearing for the twenty-fifth at six fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is the fundraising for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year.
We have two listed in your packet, and the requirement is board approval, sign contract, a profit over a thousand dollars, so we get that approved by the board. So we have the, you know, every year Carruthers and General, Johnny Logan do the Paragon promotions through PTO, and anticipate more than a thousand dollars. And additionally, we received information from the high school. Football does, signs a contract with GO, NFP, Adrenaline Fundraising to sell the gold cards, the football cards, and with the hope to profit over three thousand dollars. And I believe that contract was signed previous, maybe in the the summer, or maybe they haven't signed it yet, but I know that that is one of the fundraisers that they do. And then the yearbook, high school yearbook, profit hopes to raise profit of eighteen thousand dollars. With Balfour, yeah, I see that, yeah, sorry. So those are the four that we have currently that would require board action. So administration would recommend approval of these four fundraisers.
Any questions? And we need a motion to approve that.
Make the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dan, back to number three. The meeting's the eighteenth, not the twenty-fifth?
No, it's the twenty-fifth, we have to. We have to move it back to get the full thirty days in.
So the eighteenth will not be.
Right, the twenty-fifth. Have to have a full thirty days in between the budget display and the adoption.
Alright, item number five is the press number ninety-seven and ninety-eight updates, which is informational only.
You have them at your, your spot.
So this is the first reading of these updates and we would be. Moving back around to these next month, I would assume?
I'm sorry.
Right, that, this is the first reading, we will be reviewing these and approval at the next meeting.
So there's your evening and afternoon meetings for the next couple of days?
Yes.
Alright, next item is, Dean, is the increase in the cost of breakfast and lunch meals for for adults, and second meal is ala carte items for students, enclosure number three.
And again, I apologize for kind of lengthening paragraph in your board agenda, trying to get all the information out to you. We do have the need to increase the adult meals for breakfast and lunch, and that's based on the, a review by the state board of our national school lunch program. So they are requiring, we have to do a corrective action plan so that we are in compliance with the federal requirements of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten. So you have in your packets the recommended rates as required to, and this, and this has been increased to match the federal reimbursement rate. So we really don't have a choice on that, it's not that we want to raise the fees.
That's a mandated fee.
It is a mandated fee and 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 while it really, it really doesn't have anything to do with the fact that we have the national school lunch, the breakfast, because that's the the act that Michelle Obama brought forward, but the fact that we have the free, the free-for-all students, the community eligibility provision, if we didn't do that, we would have to raise the prices, would have had to gradually raise the prices of our student meals every year. So that's the adult piece of that, of that. So so every day, each of our students are eligible to to receive one healthy breakfast and one and lunch at no cost. But we do have a need to increase the ala carte and the second meals for students just to cover the costs of our of our food and providing that food. So those prices are included as well. So administration recommends board approval of the increase in adult meal prices and the student meal increased prices for those second meal and ala carte items at this time.
I'd be curious, so the adult, when parents come to eat with the students, what is our protocol in that?
Our staff? I really don't know. They they.
That's come to the office and.
They usually kinda, normally they don't eat with them, making them upset with them.
Okay.
So.
But mostly for for staff, I mean, when you said.
If it's a kid's birthday, maybe bring their queen or.
Okay, so we say we're increasing it, increasing it to.
I don't know what was the arrangement.
Those were.
They were in your.
Yeah, those, those were in the packet, and I don't, so, so two fifty for breakfast, three seventy-five for lunch. On the, on the staff meals, adult meals.
And how are we doing, staff meals, are they still charging? Can they charge for a while?
And no, no one's allowed to charge.
I thought we changed that a while ago.
We did, we did. And and our system doesn't allow charging anyway, so our students aren't allowed to charge. They can either pay, put money in their account, so it's there, or they can pay as they go.
And what happens if a hungry student?
They get a free.
They get a free meal? What, second meal, I'm saying, what if they want a second meal and they can't?
I have to pay.
They do.
They have to pay, so they have to have money in their account or, you know, have money that day.
We also have a share table that we started for others, so if students want an additional item, they're able to go outside and bring their lunch before having drinks, they make you want an additional item.
Like if somebody got something and they don't want it, they can put it on that share table?
So they got reinstituted then?
Same addition.
For the total being, it's re, it's in the buildings.
Okay.
So it's a table of.
It will be tomorrow, but as of today, it was. There are some issues that just have to be resolved within some buildings.
Gotcha. I think it's a great deal.
It is a great deal.
For those kids. It's unfortunate, but we do have some kids that.
I don't think it's that kind of share table.
Any other questions from the board? You don't like broccoli?
I love broccoli.
I do, too. Alright, hearing no questions, then I'll entertain a motion for the increase in the in the meal prices. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item is the permission for the ISHS Clay Target League. That's enclosure number four.
And the recommendation is to look into this opportunity, and if there is no cost to the district, to improve this as an inclusion at the high school level.
Who's the, who's pushing this?
Ted Rose and Scott Strick.
Okay. Now, if I remember right, though, TriCo, there's quite a bit of funding available for those, for that program from various.
This is actually a different league than what TriCo does.
But as far as just, just the sport in general, seems like there's a lot of backing you can get from.
This one is, I think they picked this one to start out, because it's actually one where they shoot, they meet once a week and they shoot at the range. They submit their scores online. It's a virtual shooter school, so they're not traveling around.
I mean, I believe they have to go and get like a safety certification.
That's what it says in the packet.
Safety course or safety certification.
Mr. Elmeyer, do you have any idea how many kids are gonna be interested in this?
There's gonna be, I mean, we have a good turnout with our bass club as well, our bass team, our fishing team.
Numbers?
Um.
Estimate, maybe? Five, twenty?
I'd say ten to twenty. Huh?
Or ten or fifteen.
That's what I mean, I'd say ten to twenty, maybe more. I think you're gonna, the the problem that I see that that kind of frustrates me is this is a spring season, same time as basketball.
Oh, is it?
That would, that would, that's gonna feed into that same type of student, you know, their interest, they would like to do both.
Why couldn't they?
Then they will be able to, I just can see where there's maybe a shooting tournament one weekend and there's a bass tournament that same weekend, and they're gonna.
That's the thing with this league, that they look at, there's no tournament.
There aren't any, okay.
They actually meet, they'll meet at the gun club they're a member of, I think, off of Route Three, and they just submit all their scores online. So they shoot there.
Cool.
Like once a week, practice, so it can be flexible where if somebody's in the bass club, they'll get together and say, hey, they're, we're fishing on Saturday, let's do this on Thursday, not, you know. So this one's more.
It's just one more thing for our kids.
Absolutely.
I think that's, that's important for them.
And they're.
Are you one of the shooters?
I'm back here like.
Oh, you are a shooter!
Yeah, I would, I would definitely do it. That sounds really cool, actually.
And when it comes to sc- college scholarships, like sports.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's scholarships.
Shooting, bowling, stuff like that.
Well, it just, it sounds like that's a good way to start this, and then we develop it into a higher competitive level throughout the next few years.
TriCo league does or something like that.
You got the grand champion up there shooting up at Sparta.
Yeah.
Which is phenomenal. So how many shooters are back there, are gonna be involved with this if we pass this?
I mean, I would definitely do it.
Just raise your hand.
Yeah, I would.
Bree, you're a shooter, too?
Yeah.
Four, okay, that's cool.